I'm going to open the meeting, but before I do, I just wanted to read this announcement. In accordance with the open-meeting law, the Board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Again, I apologize for the late start. We had some urgent business we had to attend to that ran in a little late, so I appreciate the understanding and flexibility. We're going to move things around a little bit on the agenda before I get to the public comment. We're going to go to the municipal opiate litigation portion of the agenda, and I'm going to turn that over to the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Those who have been paying attention to the local media may have seen that there are a number of cities and towns in the state that have been considering legal action relative to the opioid epidemic, which has really hit the nation, but included in that is the state as well here in Massachusetts. And we've been approached by our town council, Copeland Page, as well as Attorney Richard Sandman, who is here this evening, relative to an action that would be an opportunity for the town to consider pursuing a legal action against the pharmaceutical industry. And as I think those who have been watching our budget presentations, the actions of the community impact team, and the discussions here in the Board, and this has been an issue that has had our attention for a number of years now that we've been focused on, and I put some information in the packet that I can refer to later on relative to the impact here in North Reading in terms of the actual cases, and then the untold impact of the opioid epidemic across families and acquaintance of those who suffer with addiction or ultimately are victims of their addiction. So with that, we have Attorney Richard Sandman and Attorney Mark Rich here from Copeland Page to speak to this legal action, and we'll ask the Board to take a vote to authorize these attorneys to file suit on behalf of the town on this action. So through you, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it over to Attorney Rich, Attorney Sandman.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, I know you have a very busy schedule. Mark Rich from KP Law Town Council and Rich Sandman from Samit.
Rodman.
Rodman, Rodman and Samin. I apologize. We, I appreciate the opportunity to be before you once again. I know we presented quite extensively in executive session, you know, litigation and our involvement in this litigation as town council becoming involved with the national coalition to pursue this litigation. I think in interest of brevity, I'll turn it over to Attorney Sandman so that he could explain exactly what this litigation is about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and we look forward to working with North Reading together with the other 60 or 70 communities that have signed up with us to pursue cases against the manufacturers and the distributors of very dangerous opioid products. These companies, we believe, and we contend, have been flooding the markets with, in violation of federal law, with opioids. And the effect has been devastating to many communities. I believe that every community in Massachusetts has been affected in one way or the other, and that you, everyone in this room, is likely to know someone who's been affected either with an overdose that resulted in death or an overdose that resulted in some kind of treatment. It's a national epidemic. It's a significant epidemic here in Massachusetts, and we're doing something about it. We're, one, Mark's firm and my firm are two of nine firms that are part of a consolidated group called MOLA, Massachusetts Opioid Litigation Attorneys, and we are pursuing cases to recover on behalf of North Reading, past damages and future damages. The past damages will be, you have paid money for extra police, for overtime, for fire. You have paid money for other, perhaps other EMS services. You have perhaps paid money for Narcan, for treatment, for education, and that money we're seeking to recoup. And on a going-forward basis, that might be more important, the epidemic isn't going anywhere, and you will need money to fight, and the same areas that I've just mentioned will be in need of funds. So we will be seeking funds for police, for overtime, educational programs, treatment, Narcan, again, and anything else that will help us fight this very devastating crisis. I'm available to answer any questions that you have, and we've obviously spoken and sent some materials to the town in the past and prepared to answer anything should you have any additional questions.
Mr. Gilberto.
So just a little bit of information about the impact here in North Reading, and this is information provided to me by the police chief. In 2014, we responded to 15 overdoses, four of which were fatal. One of the overdoses include, involved a nine-month pregnant female and her unborn child. 2015, we responded to 24 overdoses with two being fatal. 2016, 20 opiate overdoses that we responded to with one being fatal. And 2017, last year, responded to 19 opiate overdoses with four being fatal. So those are statistics, obviously speaking to the impact, but what is not told in that is the impact upon families, the impact upon those who live here in town. And I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the Board, but I think our hope is that anything we might be able to recover would allow us to address this issue in the future, address other issues of substance abuse and the issue, whether it be in the form of treatment, prevention, additional services to respond or otherwise.
And I think it's important, too, any additional way we can go ahead and publicize this issue, continue to be part of that movement across this country, we'll start to wake up and actually have some progress in this area. So I am proud and look forward to voting for this action this evening, and I thank you for doing this and taking this on. So if there's any other questions, the Board will take a motion.
Just if we could, just so the public at home can hear, what will be the cost to the town to pursue this litigation?
There won't be cost to the town. We will front all out-of-pocket costs. We'll be paid on a contingency fee basis. If we're successful, we get paid. If we're successful, those costs will be reimbursed on a prorata basis. We hope there's going to be a national resolution that could be quite significant in size, and we will be determining the damages that you've sustained and what kind of funds you're going to need going forward. So you, and as far as any costs that are concerned, prorata, we'll recover them if we're successful. If we're not successful, we don't get paid anything, including costs.
Mr. Messeri.
I think you should probably add the fact that the drugs have led to a lot of crime, and that crime is costing the town money, too. It's costing all the towns and the Commonwealth money. And in many cases, some people have been hurt or even killed.
And it crosses borders, too. People from other borders, other towns, or North Reading goes into, some people may go into another town to get the products. It does affect, it does affect your crime rate. It affects perceptions of cities and towns across the country. Unfortunately, those numbers, any number, Mr. Gilberto just laid out, any of those are significant. The number one would be significant. Some of the communities have been very much, very largely impacted. Sounds like North Reading has done, relatively speaking, a very good job with regard to controlling the crisis. Nevertheless, we're going to recover what we can for you, the past and future damages.
Thank you. Mr. Miss.
I just think it's a marvelous opportunity for us, and I appreciate the opportunity being presented to us, you know, from Attorney Sandman, but also KP Law, whereby, you know, there isn't going to be any expenditures or outlay by the community in order to have a significant, I believe, going to have a significant impact when you have so many communities participating in this, and hopefully nationwide, participating in it to get some results. So I, again, I appreciate the opportunity to participate, and I think it's something that we're looking forward to, and we wish much success, not just from a financial standpoint, but from a standpoint of quality of life and how everybody's dealing with this epidemic. So we appreciate you coming forward and offering the opportunity to us, and I look forward to participating.
I just, just to echo a little bit of what everyone's saying, too. I don't want to be duplicative, but as Attorney CMN was mentioning, I mean, this is something that affects everyone. If it hasn't, it will. Unfortunately, substance abuse is a demon that people deal with for their entire lives, and it takes a massive amount of effort and resources to help people who are addicted and to help the families. And I think it's affecting us all in terms of the utilization and the depletion of municipal resources towards this. And we had, our DA came here to speak at the senior center about how this epidemic actually originated, and to know that, like you said, that pharmaceuticals are flooding the market. You go into the emergency room with a torn rotator cuff, come out with 150 oxy content, and you're left to police, manage that, and you're left to police that in terms of this highly addictive narcotic medication, which would really, or should really be, a last resort to be prescribed. It is a first resort and has been a first resort, and it's just growing and growing and growing. So I think that any effort that can be made, and I applaud you, too, for this, but any effort that we can take to address this, and if we can either recuperate or replenish the resources that we've directed towards this, I think it's a worthy endeavor for us to, and I'm in favor of it as well.
Now, just one last thing. I want to thank you, Mrs. Menupalli, for bringing this forward and bringing these gentlemen forward and this idea forward for our consideration. Without your, without you doing that, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight, so I want to thank you. So with that being said, I'll take the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to retain the firm of Levin, Papantonio, Thomas, Mitchell, Rafferty, and Proctor PA to pursue a civil suit against those legally responsible for the wrongful distribution of prescription opiates and damages caused thereby, to authorize the clerk of the Board to sign the engagement to represent and further to authorize the filing of such suit.
I'm going to motion in a second. I missed Menupalli. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to move to our public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Mr. Schultz, did you want to?
A quick public service announcement, if I may, Mr. Chairman. There's come to my attention, there's been an issue at the Islet River Park lately with off-leash dogs and people not picking up after their dogs, if their dogs use the facilities. Just want to let the town know that a citation today was issued for an off-leash dog, and we are going to start, they are going to start enforcing this. It's, the vast, vast majority of people follow all the rules at the park and are great dog owners, but there's a handful out there that just don't feel the rules apply to them. It's really unfair for the people who do follow the rules. It is not fair for our Parks and Recs Department to have to pick up waste, you know, animal feces. There's a public safety issue. Also, if dogs are off-leash, many little kids are in the park. Kids are often afraid. I know you may feel your dog is friendly, but a little kid, it may be frightening to them. We just ask that, you know, people, please follow the rules. Please keep your dog on leash. Please pick up after your dogs. We have plenty of bags for picking up dog waste right where you enter the park. There are signs all over the place, and, you know, we don't want this to become an issue, but it is going to be enforced now. So I just want to make sure the public is aware of that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Proclamation? Michael, do you want to do the proclamation now?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the North Reading Dollars for Scholars?
Mrs. Akivati.
Mrs. Akivati, if you wouldn't mind making your way over to the podium would be fantastic. And I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Akivati. I'm the chair, president of Dollars for Scholars. Every year, we do a phone-a-thon, March 4th to March 8th, and it's when we make the calls from either the high school or Century 21, and we're asking for donations for the scholarships for the high school students and also our post-graduates, residents of all North Reading. Last year, we gave away $29,000, and we had 49 scholarships. Eighteen of them were post-grad, and the 32 were for the high school kids. And we're expecting a very big class this year. So we ask that you claim next week Dollars for Scholars Week.
Thank you. Anybody want to, any questions? But I appreciate the time you give. Yeah, I know you don't get paid to do what you do, but it helps a lot of children in this town, even many of the members sitting up here at this seat, in these seats, that the children, future, too, will hopefully get the benefit of this program.
And I welcome anyone that would like to volunteer. I'm always looking for young people to help. And I have a lot of the kids that have received scholarships come back and do help.
So if they want to volunteer, who do they contact? Do you have?
They can contact me.
Okay.
Or anyone on the Board.
Do you have a website?
Put your name and phone number up on the big screen.
Would you like that?
No, there's a website. Isn't there a website?
Yes, there is.
There is a website. So if they, what's the website, so people at home listening, they can get in the paper? You don't know?
It's North Reading Dollars for Scholars stuff.
Perfect. Thank you.
And again, if you'd like to get a phone?
Yes.
And again, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, again, my two boys were beneficiaries of it, and certainly assisted them in covering some of the costs associated with, you know, books and tuition and all the rest, and as a parent, certainly appreciated it, too, because the cost of education hasn't gone down. It is unbelievable.
We have to kind of end.
So, you know, the work that the Board members and the kids who are volunteering do really has paid dividends for, how many years now?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five years here in the community, and to be congratulated and appreciated. And again, we urge everybody to answer the phone when they call.
So we'll take the proclamation. We'll vote on it, and then we'll take a picture.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim the week of March 4th through March 8th to be North Reading Dollar for Scholar Week and to read the proclamation.
Second.
I'm going to motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Please read the proclamation.
Okay, we have a proclamation from the Board of Selectmen, whereas North Reading Dollars for Scholars is a group of hard-working, dedicated individuals, and whereas North Reading Dollars for Scholars have devoted both time and talent to the difficult task of seeking scholarship funds for deserving students, and whereas North Reading Dollar for Scholars is planning its annual phone-a-thon for the week of March 4th through the 8th, 2018, where high school students will contact all North Reading residents by telephone, seeking pledges to the North Reading Dollars for Scholar Scholarship Fund. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of North Reading, hereby proclaim the week of March 4th through March 8th, 2018, as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week, and urge all citizens to open their hearts and purses for the benefit of North Reading students who want to continue their education, and this would be signed by Michael A. Prisco, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
All right, quick photo?
Thank you.
Anyone else want to sign? Thank you. Please come join.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll stay next to the call guy.
Come on, call's coming anyway. Want to?
Maybe we've learned something.
I don't. Say hi next to him. There you go. All right.
It's a free advertising. All right? Thank you. Thank you, yes.
Thanks.
All right.
We have the pleasure this evening to get a quick update on all the happenings over 104 Lowell Road since we did the transaction with Pulte Homes. We have, this evening, we had Reed Blute with us from Pulte Homes to give us a quick presentation, kind of get us up to speed on the ongoing's on over there.
Thank you very much.
Reed, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Michael?
Yes.
Quick technological question.
Sure.
Can we, can we get back and put it on the slide show?
It is calling.
Oh, it is.
Yes, it is.
Isn't it Martin Pond?
Okay. Who was the actual guy? This is a PDF, so this isn't the.
Did you know that?
There was a PowerPoint presentation, if you'd like that one.
What? Who was the actual guy named Martin? And everything's me doing.
I have no idea.
Would you come down?
Who's Martin's Pond named after?
Like, who's Mr. Martin?
It's a good question.
Do you know?
He's got a first name and a last name.
It's true. Could be.
You know all that stuff.
Yeah, try that one.
We'll find out.
I guess.
Give out a gift card.
Oh, there we go.
Martin's Pond.
Yeah.
Must have somebody down there.
Should have to do the whole screen.
And then I'll do the slideshow for you.
At the beginning?
From the beginning, yeah.
That good?
There we go. Yeah. Great. No, sorry, sorry about that.
No problem.
We apologize. So just to reiterate, my name is Reed Blute, and I work with Pulte Homes, and we're, you know, fortunate enough to be starting off with our Martin's Landing community, which is at the location of previously the JT Berry Center off Lowell Road, right near Edgewood Apartments, which I know everyone's familiar with. And we've been working with the town for quite some time, our members of the Board, Mr. Gilberto and other staff, and last year, you know, we were all fortunate enough at the end of the year to be able to conclude the closing on the property. And then we've, you know, and prior to that during the year, we worked with the permitting departments throughout town, and they're very cooperative and responsive, and we were able to get moving under the, under that deadline. So we are very pleased about that and proud to be able to start here in North Reading. And I was asked tonight to give a brief update on the status of our, of our construction there, and I'll do that. I'll run through things quickly. Feel free to interject if you have a question.
Just a quick question to start.
Yes.
How did you come up with the name Martin's Landing?
Well, I mean, it was a nod to Martin's Brook, which is in the rear of the property. And I know there's also a Martin's Pond in the other end of town, but we really keyed onto that. And then the landing component is sort of, again, a, you know, a nod to the proximity of the Brook for, you know, kayaking, canoeing, things like that. It's mostly a marketing name, but we wanted something that was local and something that, you know, we felt was appropriate.
Thank you.
Here's just some Google map of the existing conditions from last year, since Google map, that's about when it is, a year or so behind. And we can see that the Edgewood Apartments are off to the left, and then the treaty area, which was pre, is the 34-acre parcel that we purchased from the town, is pretty much in the middle. So, oh, here's our, oh, that's different. This isn't the way that is changed on your computer for some reason. Let me see if I can get back to, okay. Sorry about this. I think I missed, I'm just missing a couple of slides, but I'll, I'll just jump to the construction, the status of construction. So right now, if you look at this aerial picture, at the top in the center is the existing Edgewood Apartments, and their main road is sort of curves toward the camera in this photograph. And off to the left, the entryway, soon to be named Berry Way, is, connects out to Route 62, Lowell Road on the left. So our plan is for this three-way intersection to become a four-way intersection, and the fourth road will be the new road to be constructed into Martin's Landing, and it's under construction right now. And the small building, which is a sales trailer right now, be a temporary sales trailer, that you can see in the, sort of the center-left of this picture. And you can see the, there's a little bit of snow on the ground back last Friday, I think it was, on the north sides, and you can see the construction has commenced. This is the first building that's under construction right now, building one, for lack of another number. And in the back of the foundation, you can see the existing pine trees. Those are going to remain. We want to keep as many of those tall pines as was possible. Also, at the, so the top, you can see Lowell Road running left to right. Here, we're just looking a little bit to the west, the emergency access and the construction access is shown sort of to the center-right with a couple of entry, temporary construction trailer, office trailers are located there. And the foundation for our second building is off to the upper-left. I don't know. Can you see that? Oh, it does work. Okay. So this little area here will be the second building. I'll zip through these relatively quickly. Again, looking to the southwest, really, I'm just showing the change of status of the property since December when we, when we transferred title. So we've been working there very diligently. What we're doing in general here that you see is we're preparing the ground, we're doing what we call cuts and fills, mass grading. We're preparing for the installation of the utilities, so we have water throughout the property, town water, and then we have a wastewater treatment plant, which is handled on, on the property, a private wastewater treatment plant, which is located back in this area, if you can see the little cursor, sort of to the center on the left. They're working on the commenced construction of that facility, which will have to be up and running by the time we have occupancies in the first building. Again, just another little pan over to the, to the east, to the southeast, and a general view of the property. And approximately the center will be the future leaching field that's associated with the wastewater treatment facility, even though the facility is in, sort of towards the back on this photograph, the leaching area is up towards the front, which will ultimately be used as a, as a village green, since all of that will be buried underground. This is the location of the existing temporary sales trailer, which, once the first building is completed and occupied, this trailer will be removed and the clubhouse will be built here. So as you're coming in, soon to be Berry Way, you would turn right at the three-way, soon to be four-way intersection, and then directly into parking area and stop and visit at the temporary sales office trailer. And again, then again, it's moving backwards a little with our backs to Route 62, and there's a stand of pine trees that we were able to keep to help buffer our community from, from the street, frankly. This is just a photograph of a similar type of home that we're envisioning, constructing. We have on our plan nine buildings similar to this, 450 homes altogether in nine buildings. There's 50 units in each building. It is limited to age 55 and better, so age restricted. I have a number of interior photographs here from similar homes, just to give you all an idea, and folks at home, an idea of what the homes will actually look like once they're completed and once they're furnished. We have two different, mainly different styles of buildings. By that, I mean one-bedroom homes and two-bedroom homes. This particular one's a corner unit, it's a two-bedroom home. This shows designer kitchen, which is very similar to the, to all of the kitchens in the various homes, which are important focal point of the family. There are options that are available, countertops, different type of stoves, refrigerators, things like that. Again, I say this is a two-bedroom unit, so there's just an idea of what the two bedrooms could look like. There's a formal living room and a formal dining room in this particular style. Again, it's a decorated model. This is an idea of what it could look like in one of the one-bedroom homes. It's more of an open concept. The kitchen, this is the photo in the top-left, if you turn to the right a bit from the kitchen, you can see your dining area, your living room, right out to the sliding glass doors and balcony. Every home has its own balcony, which is kind of nice outside. You can step out, get some fresh air, have a stable and chairs outside. This is an example of one of the home offices, which is available in some of the styles in the upper-left, for folks who are, you know, still working from home, which is quite, quite popular, actually. Here's our proposed future foyer. There's secure access. The main foyer does have an open area, which contains the mailroom, so to speak, but once you get past the mailroom to the doors in the end of this photograph, those are secure and only open to residents who would have a fob or code so they could get in. And if you have a visitor, there's a communications terminal in the open foyer where you can buzz, buzz whoever you're visiting, and they can buzz you in. Also, the elevators are located here, so you can, on the upper-left photo, the elevator goes up all four floors, and then it goes down to the basement in the parking garage. And here's a couple of photos of a parking garage, safe, secure. Again, it has controlled access, where you have to have a code or a fob to get in, and a nice thing, no more shoveling snow or scraping of ice if you're in the parking garage. This is a photo of, we're calling the Lanings Club. It's our proposed clubhouse, which will be, which will replace the sales trailer once we're up and running in the first building. The clubhouse is really a focal point for the community activities, and we're envisioning things like, there'll be a fitness center, cards room in there, arts and crafts area, meeting room, et cetera, so that everyone can It's our proposed clubhouse, which will be, which will replace the sales trailer once we're up and running in the first building. The clubhouse is really a focal point for the community activities. And we're envisioning things like, there'll be a fitness center, cards room in there, arts and crafts area, meeting room, et cetera. So that everyone can, they can gather there, they can use that as a kicking-off point for using the walking trails, biking, and all sorts of activities. Our target homeowner, as I mentioned, is 55 and better, because that is the age restriction to live at Martin's Landing. And what we found is that folks of, of that interest level, they're very, they're very active, they want to be outside, they're often still working or consulting, or perhaps semi-retired. So, they have more flexibility, more free time, and they can enjoy their, their pursuits. They can avail themselves of kayaking in Martin's Brook area and other nearby areas. And also avail themselves of just walking around the property. So, our village green is a rendering similar to what we envision it to be like. It will be a large open green, as I mentioned earlier. There's a gazebo, trail system, so folks can walk around, enjoy the, enjoy the outdoors. Just about the end now. Positive fiscal impact to the town. We all, you know, we've heard this before, but I think it's worth repeating. A property that previously paid no property taxes at all to the town, you know, is now, upon completion, going to generate between $2.5 and $3 million on a sustainable annual basis in property taxes. And most of those funds, approximately 93%, are net to the town. In other words, about 7% of that number, by our calculations, would be used to offset services. And there will be some services. Naturally, there's fire, there's police, there's ambulance. However, we're not expecting any significant addition to kids in school. And being a condominium community, all of the other services, plowing, snow plowing, trash removal, maintenance and repair of the roadways, things like that are covered by the community. So, it's not a cost to the town. Here's to wrap up. This is our prospective time schedule. Where, clearly, we're underway now, and I showed you the, where we are in construction of the first building. Our hope is that by the end of this year, we should have folks moving into our first building. As long as, you know, we're able to get our, our vertical building permit in a timely fashion, which I'm sure we'll be able to do, we'll be working on our first building. Then, we have two more buildings scheduled to come on rapidly after that. They're numbered in sequence here, but those sequences, we jump around a little bit in building number from the, from the site plan. Excuse me. So, we're building, we're doing building one first, we're doing building five second, we're doing building four third, building six fourth, et cetera. We're working our way around the, around the loop. Again, in general, right now, we're hoping to do one or, one to two buildings each year. It's largely going to be driven by market acceptance and demand. But the work that we have done thus far in researching the demographics and the market demand have been very strong here in North Ridding. And our, really, our target buyer is someone who lives in town now. They've, they've raised their kids, the, the kids are, are out, they're either at school or they've moved away. And now they have the empty nest syndrome, which, you know, we've all heard about, and they're ready to downsize. So, they have a desire to stay in their community. They've been here for many years. They have friends, they have social connections, they have church connections, they volunteer in the community, they don't want to leave the community. But they want to leave the headaches of the big house. So, this gives them an opportunity, which we feel is a, is a great benefit to residents in town now. And it allows them an area where they can stay in town, they can enjoy their 55-plus years, their empty nester years. They can still be active, they can still be working as they have in the past and involved in community activities. They don't have to leave town. And they get a new home, which is, which is very desirable to a lot of folks. They don't have to shovel the snow, they don't have to mow the lawn, they don't have to clean the gutters, do any outside painting. It's all taken care of by the Condominium Association. So, I know I threw a lot of information out here very rapidly, but I want to be respectful of your time, and if there's any questions, I'll, I'll do my best to answer them.
Mr. O'Leary, please.
Welcome to the community, first of all.
Thank you.
Just for the public's information, what do you anticipate the cost of the units to be?
So, yes, so that's, that's a fair question. I get it a lot, frankly.
Right.
And, you know, frankly, we haven't set the pricing yet. And the most honest answer I can give everyone is, the prices will be set at the time that they're offered for sale, comparable to what the market prices are. Now, what, what I interpreted that to mean is, we're probably going to see pricing in the low threes to the high threes right now. That's about where the market is for, for our type of home. There, the one-bedroom homes clearly will be, are smaller. They are approximately 1,000 square feet. The two-bedroom homes on the corner, it's the largest one, that's approximately 1,500 square feet, from some of the photos I showed you. Those, those homes are more expensive, they're larger. As one moves up the, the building in floor, there's a premium for the penthouse homes, they're a little more expensive than the ones on the first floor or the second floor. So, right now, we actually have seven different styles of two-bedrooms and one-bedrooms. And each one's a little different in square footage, but generally, that's what we're expecting, from the low threes up to the high threes and maybe a penthouse, if someone puts in all the options, it could touch 400,000. That's a, that's a guess, but I'll hold it to it.
No, that's good. It's important to note, and it actually seems, relatively speaking, fairly reasonable, something that people locally would consider. And Jane's already thinking about it.
You know, we have not, we have not done a condominium budget yet, but, you know, again, typically, we, we try to keep the condo fee around 300-ish. And it varies, again, each, each home is, the fee is set by their square footage, there's a formula to do that. But we've intentionally not loaded the community, the residents, with expensive amenities. So, things like swimming pools, tennis courts. We do have a nice clubhouse, but it's a, it's a very economical one to run. So, we feel that we'd, rather than have a lot of amenities built as part of the condominium, which everyone would have to pay for every month, whether they used it or not. Not everyone goes swimming, not everyone plays tennis. And if you're not using those, you still have to pay for them, if it's part of the condominium. So, what we've tried to do is keep those costs down, so they'll be in the 300 range for everyone. And then, folks who are tennis players, or, you know, swimming, or want to play baseball, softball, any of those types of activities, we want them to use the amenities that are already in the local area. So, amenities that are here, just next door, the other side of the apartments, you know, there's a public park where, you know, folks can go instead of building another one on the site. Swimming pools in the area and tennis courts in the area, that's what we really envision our, our folks to, to be able to utilize, rather than having to pay for them onsite.
It's also important to note that this isn't your first project.
Not our first project.
Well, it's been around a little while, and you have lots of experience with it.
We do.
And I think that was one of the benefits of your proposal, that weighed heavily connecting with you, because, you know, this is not a first call around for you.
No, we've built, we've built many of these types of homes in these types of communities, over 55 communities for active adults. 55 and better is probably, right now, it's the majority of our work. There's a, there's a great number of folks who are, who are hitting that age and continuing to, you know, to, to grow and mature in age, the baby boomer generation. And those folks are, are going to continue to grow and to mature and to need what we feel is this type of housing, you know, in the future for the next 10-plus years. The demographics just keep on rising. The nice thing about that is that, we all know there's the millennial generation too that is also growing and maturing now. And even though they seem to have waited, delayed to start their family life and, and move out of the parents' family home, it's starting to happen more and more now. So, they're starting to form families, they're starting to purchase homes. And they can now purchase a, an existing home, which perhaps an empty nester has decided, well, they don't need that much space anymore, they're ready to downsize. Now, the millennial family buyer is ready to move into that first family home. So, it's a great synergy, and it, it actually provides housing for two different types of, of, you know, buyer demand.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. I, I hope you're finding everything you need from the town, and we're able to provide you the permitting in a timely manner, and all the information be in exchange, hopefully to your liking.
Yeah, everything's done very well, as I, as I said in the beginning. And it's been a great group to work with here, the staff and the folks in this room as well. And, you know, we look forward to, right now, we're working mostly with, you know, engineering, building department, and we're starting to get into the nitty-gritty with, with those folks. But, you know, we've had pre-meetings with them, there's been a lot of open communication, and that's really the key. Nobody likes any surprises, and we don't want to surprise anybody. And similarly, you know, it's just, it's all about communication. That's been very, very good and very open, so I'm sure that will continue, unless there is any reason why I wouldn't agree.
And thank you again for agreeing to meet on the 14th with all of us, when Secretary Ash comes to the town and provide the same presentation. I know he's looking forward to it, and you and.
Yes, happy to. And please let me know any, any tweaks I should make.
We will, we will. Any other board members like to? Thank you, and again, welcome to the neighborhood.
You're welcome.
We, we love seeing the progress, so thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Have a good evening. All right. Next. Approve legal bills. Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of $120,000 retainer for legal services, deposition costs, and expert services for Furman Gregory Deptula, and further to release the amount of $71,867.01 from a previous retainer payment to pay invoice number 11,360, dated February 9, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Minutes?
Minutes for February 12, 2018, regular session, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 12, 2018, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Unanimous. All right, the fun portion of this evening.
Executive session.
Oh, we do, that's right, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 12, 2018, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion, and you got a second. Mr. O'Leary, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Unanimous. Now, we get to it. The fiscal year 2019 budget status, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gilberto and.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ro.
As the finance director approaches the podium, as we did last year, we've put together a PowerPoint presentation, which is effectively intends to convey a little more, or maybe in larger print, the information that's on the revenue and expense plan, which was in the meeting packet for this evening. I'll just note that I provided the, the last updated copy to the board at the February 12 meeting. I indicated at that time that there was a financial planning team meeting scheduled for that week. That meeting was held, and a revised plan was reviewed, and the plan, the copy that's in your packet this evening reflects that revised plan. We have some slides that we'll go through that I'll ask the finance director to reference, which will largely reflect what is in that revenue and expense plan. This really wasn't intended to be a discussion about the hundreds of pages of departmental budget requests that have been received, which we will evaluate over the coming meetings. It's more intended to provide the bigger picture of where things stand. And I will just note for everyone to understand, who may not have, for anyone who has not seen or participated in the budget process in the past, who may be watching, this is really the first public discussion of some details of the budget. It coincides with what I believe has been the release of the school committee's budget for fiscal year 2019 as well. This is the beginning of the public portion of the process, which will go on through, likely, the end of April, the first week of May, and perhaps even beyond, where the requests will be reviewed and prioritized through the budget hearings, and ultimately, reconciliation to a balanced budget will occur towards the end of April, as has been the case in previous years. The one thing that I, I will note, which I'm sure you've seen in the, in the information that's in the packet, that is different this year, is that we did ask departments to request, we did provide the opportunity to allow departments to, to request beyond-level services requests, which some departments did. Obviously, we're not in a position to be able to recommend all of those items. Some of the items that were recommended, in my recommendation to the, to the board, may or may not survive the budget process, but that will be something that we'll factor in after we have the departmental budget hearings. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Elizabeth Roque, Finance Director, to go through the presentation.
Please.
Good evening. So, as Michael just mentioned, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the FY19 budget forecast. It's basically taking the revenue plan, which you've all seen, and just laying it out in different sections, so that it's clearer to read and more larger. Okay, so, this slide we have every year, it explains our key revenue sources as part of our revenue plan. One of the major new pieces to our revenue for FY19, as we just heard, is the addition of Polte Homes, which was a piece of town-owned land that now is going to be brought on to the tax rolls. A very small piece is recognized for FY19, and as the build-out continues, each year there will be additional new growth and tax revenue from, from that property. And then annually, we have local aid that consists of Chapter 70, which is school aid, and we have unrestricted local aid. Both of those items, according to the governor's budget, have increased slightly for FY19, and we'll see those increases in a future slide. We also then account for local receipts, which is made up of motor vehicle excise tax, license and permits, fines and forfeitures, fees, investment income, there's a whole slew of local receipts that are accounted for. And then under other sources, other sources is other financing sources, so it would be a transfer in from ambulance receipts reserve, or in from water indirect costs, or a transfer in from the debt capital stabilization fund to offset the debt service budget. So, those are some of those other sources. This is a, a quick snapshot of the revenue plan, just broken down into the major categories that we just viewed on the previous slide. So, it's just comparing our current fiscal year of FY18 to FY19. We also then list the dollar amount change and the percent change. So, as I mentioned, new growth, we are factoring in a small dollar amount for just the land value of Martin's Landing, because that was what was recorded prior to January 1st. Last year, new growth came in higher for some new developments and, you know, remodels within town. So, this is, you know, a conservative estimate. Like I said, slightly, Chapter 70 and unrestricted increased, and motor vehicle excise and was our biggest increase under local receipts at, at this point. Okay, moving on. Budget elements. So, the composition of the annual operating budget is made up of fixed costs, which are employees' benefits, health insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, you know, those, those are some of the major ones, also Medicare. Then, another component of debt service would be, another component of fixed costs would be debt service, and the regional school assessments, which would be Essex Technical and Northeast. be debt service, and the regional school assessments, which would be Essex Technical and Northeast. Those are large components of our fixed costs. Then we get the town's general government budget, as well as the school's budget. But first, of available revenue, the fixed costs come off the top. And then the general government budget receives 34% of the remaining available revenue, and the school receives 66% of the available revenue. The major driver of our fixed cost budget would be health insurance and debt service, those would be the two. But health insurance, you can see, is a large, a large piece of it, and each year it grows substantially. So currently, our health insurance budget is 5.8 million. And for FY19, we are factoring a 7.5% increase to health insurance. So that is what the 6.3 million represents, 6.289. We also are, you know, in the process of reviewing the actual cost for claims, and we are looking into the performance of our PFA, which was something that we implemented in FY18, as well as having discussions with the IAC, which is our employee union makeup of group that we review at this time of year, almost monthly. We have pretty consistent meetings with the IAC. This year's key expenditure drivers, like I mentioned, health insurance, county retirement is always a large one as well, general liability insurance, which is property and casualty, Medicare, and the capital improvement plan. We each year incrementally increase that approximately $25,000 from raisin appropriate. And this year, our solid waste collection contract expires in June, and one of the town's biggest budget drivers would be the solid waste collection anticipated industry increase. This number, you know, could be a lot larger. And this number comes from the town administrator's budget request. The departmental's budget request was a lot larger, and we will review that on Saturday morning.
Mr. Misery.
Liz, you may have said it, and I missed it. The county retirement that you've got in the plan here is an increase of how much percentage?
I believe it's 3.5%. We'll see that in a future slide.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Same thing with the health insurance?
Health insurance, yes. Health insurance is a 7.5% increase, but I do break this down on a future slide.
Okay. Thank you.
Here we are, 3.6. So this is basically just a breakdown of our major fixed costs, and you can see the county retirement figure and the dollar change, as well as the percent change, and health insurance. And the other category is made up of all the other fixed costs under employee benefits. So that would be workers' comp, that would be OPEB, that would be Medicare, that would be uninsured medical unemployment, that's just employee benefits. And you can see that the employee benefits budget is increasing 5.6% over FY18. The other fixed cost category that's listed there is the regional school assessment, reserve for abatements and exemptions, snow and ice, and debt service, those are some of those, and the general liability insurance. Those are the other fixed costs. And then we come down to our total fixed costs, which includes the other fixed costs, as well as employee benefits, and you can see that overall, it's a 3.3% increase. Here is a snapshot of our available revenue compared to FY18, and it also is a snapshot of the town's level services submitted budget, as well as the schools. And you can see on the bottom, the school's budget gap as of today, or as of the financial planning meeting that we had on February 15, and the town's budget gap as the town administrator submitted his budget request.
Mr. Misery.
And those, both those gaps are based on a calculated level services?
No.
So, no, they are not. The estimated level services for general government budget is level services plus a few things. I wouldn't say that it's modified level services, because this is the town administrator's recommended budget request. The departmental budget request for the town side was a lot larger. So this is slightly modified level services, I would say, but it's not fully modified level services. And the school's figure is modified level services.
Okay, I'm not looking in the same place, I'm just looking at the revenue plan that was put into the...
So down at the bottom of that revenue plan?
Right, down at the bottom. It says town's 2019 budget level services, 16 million, oh, 39, 563. And then there's a second line, it says budget modified services was 17, 503, 438.
Yes.
And the town's available revenue, leaving a variance of 587,000-plus.
Yes, okay.
That's based on the level services number, that was my point.
So the town's number that's listed up here is the town administrator's recommended budget.
Okay.
Which is not a fully modified level services budget. The departmental request of the 17 million and change is the modified level services.
But it's that top line minus available revenue that comes up with a 587,783 shortfalls.
Yes, and that is listed on this slide, on the bottom line.
Yeah.
The town budget gap is the 587. We're comparing the available revenue to the town administrator's recommended budget.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And what you see as the number change, where you see that it's 816,000, that is year over year. So that's taking FY18's approved budget over FY19's town administrator recommended submitted budget. So that's what that column represents, and the budget gap on the bottom is based upon the town administrator's recommended budget.
Any other question?
So we don't usually talk about current cash reserves this early on in the budget process, but the town administrator and myself thought that this would be useful so that everybody can see our financial position as we stand today. So this lists some of our current cash reserves that are typically used as the other financing source on the revenue plan. Free cash, typically, we evaluate free cash, and we pay for one-time items from free cash, or we will transfer free cash into the Debt Capital Stabilization Fund to offset the debt service budget. The stabilization fund, we typically do not touch to offset the operating budget. And as I just mentioned, the capital stabilization fund, that does get used to offset the debt service budget annually. The water infrastructure stabilization fund typically will pay for smaller capital items within, you know, for the water department. And when I say smaller, you know, items that only have a five-year bonding term, we typically will pay from the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund. The solid waste stabilization fund is typically used to offset the sanitation budget, the solid waste budget. And the funds that are available in this fund come from any remaining operating budget funds at the end of a fiscal year in the sanitation budget. Water retained earnings, typically, the water retained earnings are transferred into the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund in order to pay for smaller-term capital items. And the cell tower fund is another financing source that offsets the operating budget annually.
Mrs. Manuelli would like to ask a question.
I just have a, you have a great way of explaining in layman's terms what these financial terms are, but can you, for the viewing public, explain debt service? You've mentioned it a few times.
Sure, yes. Debt service is what we pay for principal and interest on items that we have borrowed for, so capital items. You know, if we're buying a dump truck for DPW, or a fire truck that was approved at last town meeting, you know, the fire truck costs $575,000. The town pays for that over time, so it has a certain length of time that we can borrow for. And we, you know, typically, for an item that large, it would be 20 years or 15 years, depending upon the industry life on a vehicle like that. A dump truck is typically 10 to 15 years as well, but sometimes you can extend the life on those. So it is money that we're borrowing to pay for these large capital items, that we pay principal and interest on, and that becomes our debt service, similar to a mortgage payment, where we're borrowing the funds to pay for those items.
Thank you.
So some of the next steps that we need to take for the FY19 budget process, as I mentioned earlier, one of our steps that we're taking with the health insurance budget is meeting with the IAC on a regular basis, and working with them to finalize the health insurance budget for FY19, as well as meeting with you all to, you know, review the status of where we stand, and what, you know, what we may need to do to tackle the FY19 health insurance budget. We will also continue the procurement of the solid waste collection contract, which we have, we're carrying an increase in the operating budget for FY19. We are evaluating the use of available funds to address the budget shortfall, so that, basically, what I mean by that is evaluating the current slide, seeing what we can attribute to the other financing sources on the revenue plan, if we can increase those by any of those available revenue sources. And we are going to begin on Saturday, conducting our budget hearings, and reviewing the departmental requests, and prioritizing their requests, along with the town administrator's recommended budget request.
Mr. Gilberto.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of clarifications to the Finance Director. On the last slide, relative to cash reserves, that available free cash of just over $1 million, I believe we're carrying, using $500,000 of that number in the revenue plan that was in the package, so the balance after including the revenue plan would be about $558,000.
Yes.
And then, secondly, just a note relative to the solid waste contract. There was some initial information that I think we reviewed with the board back at a December meeting with a former DPW director, relative to a projected increase, somewhere in the vicinity of 25%. And I think we carried that in the budget, in my budget recommendation, as a potential increase of 100, just under $170,000. But after having an initial conversation with the provider, due to the continued deterioration in the market, I think that we can expect that it will exceed that dollar amount in terms of the increase. So the acting Public Works Director, Mr. Clark, and I will be working on a procurement document that will go out and shop around probably early next week, relative to a successor contract. I also think that, based on the timelines that we're looking at and the costs at this point, while we will certainly be closely entertaining the opportunity for the automated collection in at least one of the two areas that we do collection, it's more likely to see that being implemented in fiscal year 2020, rather than fiscal year 2019, because of the cost. And that's just new information that's come in over the past 48 hours that I just want to make the board aware of. We'll talk about it further at a future meeting. Not sure that we'll have much more useful information for Saturday's budget hearing, but I know that it will come up later in the process.
Do you project that there's going to be a difference in costs to the ratepayers even next year?
With regard to solid waste? I think undoubtedly we're going to see a change in the, an increase in the solid waste disposal fee, based on where the market is at. You know, again, that fee is intended to cover the cost not only of collection, but of disposal. And the biggest issue that we're facing is that recycling, which at one point in time had a value towards our costs, is now basically being treated as trash and being disposed of at the cost of trash, $70 a ton or more.
It's not just our community, it's communities all around us.
That's correct. And we, you know, I think, to our credit, took advantage, based on the DPW director's recommendation of locking in some pricing with Covanta before this really got out of control, and that was back in September. So that is, I think, one step that we are, we've been ahead of the market.
Well, I think it's a perfect example. When was the last time we had a rate increase to the ratepayers?
I think you're looking at at least six years, is that right, more?
Six or seven years, if I remember correctly. Which, you know, no one wants a rate increase, I don't think anybody in this board was hoping we'd have to do that, but I think we've worked pretty hard to stabilize it for six or seven years, so unfortunately, I think it's time to... We've run that course, I think, as far as we could. Unfortunately, in this situation with the recycling isn't getting any better, and I have to say, out of everything you presented today, and I've done this now several years, and the one that really has me the most very nervous is this solid waste issue, and what the future brings for us. So I think we have to get very creative, and I think we're going to need the community's support, too, in supporting whatever path we chose, we choose, that we get the community buy in, because this isn't getting any cheaper, and it's not going to get any easier. Questions, board members? I know, I know you went through this in relatively quick time, but I know there's a tremendous amount of hours put into you and your entire team, and the town administrator as well, so thank you. I look forward to the meetings on, starting getting things kicked off on Saturday. The fun begins, so... But if there's no other questions, we'll let you get home, and we'll continue on with our agenda.
Thank you.
We'll see you on Saturday.
Rest up.
No, we'll go. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, through you, two items to report for this evening's meeting. The first is that I am pleased to report that the town's Youth Substance Abuse Grant Coalition has successfully completed the National Coalition Academy. Coalition was recognized at a ceremony in National Harbor, Maryland, on February 6. Copies of the certificates in the program are attached, and I want to thank Amy Luckowitz for her work representing the town, stewarding the Coalition's participation in this event earlier this month. I'm also pleased to report that North Reading will receive reimbursement for expenses that the town incurred during the 2016 election cycle, in which early voting was offered. And I want to thank Representative Brad Jones for his advocacy on behalf of the town, assisting us in identifying and obtaining every dollar that's available to the town from the state. I know he filed an amendment early in the legislative process, and advocated for it to be included in a successor bill, and then ultimately advocated for the release of the funding, and I just want to extend our gratitude and recognition to Representative Jones and to Senator Tarr for their efforts. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Misery.
Just a question regarding Chapter 90. Have we got any, I know the Governor proposed a $20 million...
He has.
Have we got any info on that?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. I believe there's a letter in correspondence this evening, but the number, if I recall offhand, is $512,000, which is largely consistent with what we've seen the past three fiscal years.
Okay, so there's no change.
And as you know, there's a pending $300,000 request in the capital improvement plan for town road repairs, which would supplement that, for a total of just over $800,000.
Any questions? Anything else? Okay. We'll go into old and new business, we'll start, Mr. O'Leary.
Well, I'm sure, Mr. Chairman, that, I know we got a little rushed this evening, and I'm sure you were going to comment on the tragedy of last week. And, you know, generally, you know, we talk about having a moment of silence, things of that. And again, from the time I've been sitting in this board, we've had a lot of different tragedies take place in this country, and the state, and this nation, and we take a moment of silence. And, you know, this is, this is not a moment of silence that we should be having here. This is a moment for, should be for, we should be raising our voices and speaking loudly and clearly. This is a moment to voice our support for the survivors and their families who are speaking out. There should be a moment to applaud the sane and sensible voice of those surviving students at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, who are the true leaders in this particular, at this particular time. And they're leaders who are being ignored and deflected by their elected leaders. I mean, what's happened down in Florida, where they haven't been able to meet with their elected officials, is very sad. Again, it's a sad state of affairs when our children have a clearer vision... Hopefully, they have a stronger voice, and for sure, they're not going away, which is fantastic, you know. And unfortunately, it takes tragic events like these to get these kids to rise up, but they're not going away. Our House, Senate, and executive branch down in Washington won't confront or deal with the issues of gun control. Will have no universal or expanded background checks, no federal assault weapons ban, no raising of minimum age to purchase or carry a gun to 21. Yet, these children can buy, purchase, carry a gun at 18, but can't buy or have a beer with their piece of pizza. Something wrong. What we will get, probably to look at, is some legislation that, to blame it on mental illness, it's going to require local schools to do better screening, reporting, educating, counseling. Again, passing the costs on to the local communities. We're going to see legislations that's going to probably require local schools to provide secure, a more secure environment. Here in our own community, with the new school that we built, we have spent tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars on additional security already to protect our youth in our school systems. And who knows if that's enough, but those costs, again, are going to be passed off to, you know, local communities. We're going to have proposals to arm our teachers, and quote, to quote a governor, "Arm those willing to be armed with additional stipends and add guns to our schools." Local communities should arm, arm police to every school, and metal detectors. We've already been doing some of this in some of the communities around here. I guess, you know, it's more of a reality check. Again, we talk back to Sandy Hook, we talk back to Columbine, we talk back to all of these other events that have taken place over the last several decades in lack of action. It's important to put it into perspective here. The Second Amendment was conceived and drafted when families and militia, local, state, and federal government had muskets and gunpowder, ramrods and lead balls for weapons. You know, the government had maybe a few extra cannons that the citizens didn't. But that's when it was conceived, when it was drawn upon, and times have changed, certainly. Right now, our citizenry is better armed than our public safety officers, even here in North Reading. Sad state of affairs, something we need to be talking about, looking at. Our country progressed from horseback, horse and buggy, to stagecoaches, to trains, planes, and automobiles, and soon driverless cars, and already drones. The laws, rules, and regulations for owning, operating, proficiency, proficiency testing, documentation of transfer, and suitability of ownership and operation have changed with the, with the times, but not with guns and gun ownership. We have to call upon our federal leaders to do something along with our state. Things should and must change. Finally, to our own backyard here a little bit, you know, I have a wonderful, strong, loving, and lasting relationship of over 40 years with my wife Sue. If you ask her, I don't get 100% rating, voting rating, or rating with her, because we don't agree on everything, you know. But we do come to some reasonable, yeah, well, anyway, I don't have 100% voting record with her, anyway. With her, yet, you know, we have legislators close to home here in Massachusetts with 100% ratings from the Gun Owners Action League of Massachusetts or the NRA. Something's wrong with that. Even in the best of relationships, there will be disagreement, and it's not happening. People need to get more realistic about how we're going to deal with these things and come up with, kind of, come up to date with reasonable laws to assist in controlling this. You know, so to my colleagues, you know, feel free to join in. You know, my, a moment of silence, you know, shouldn't be a token gesture. It should be a sincere, and followed with, with action and loud voices. And, you know, you know, I've prayed for these victims and the survivors, along with everybody else in this community across the nation. And moments of silence are wonderful and a fine gesture, but they shouldn't be meaningless, and they shouldn't be shallow. And I think we need to start speaking out here at the local level, so it resonates through the state and up to the national level. And here in Massachusetts, we are far more progressive than a lot of the states in the nation, but it has to catch hold. This is, this is out of control, and something needs to be done. So I thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
And I do apologize. I did have planned in a moment of silence in the beginning where we had eaten up so much time, and we had some people that had to rush to another meeting. I'm sorry I lost, but we could certainly, we could certainly take the moment now to just reflect on what's happened and what's continuing to happen throughout this country. Take a moment of silence. You know, I appreciate the words, Steve, that you're saying, and, you know, we don't always agree either, but in this particular case, I'm in agreement with you. And I think there's a lot that needs to be done. It should have been done before this administration we have now, it should have been done before the administration that was there before them, and so on. But we can't continue to do nothing, and I think, finally, for the first time, I can say, I think everyone's realizing doing nothing is not an option. But I will say this, I'm proud of Massachusetts. I think we've set the bar for gun control and the things that need to be done, and we have a lot more work we can do. I am a gun license owner. I was trained with the military, I've worked with the military, I've gone through a lot of things, I've seen a lot of things, I've been all around the world many times, and it doesn't need to be the way it is. So I think it does take leadership at all levels, at local level, all the way to the federal level. And we are, we have to have many voices on this one, and the time is right to make common sense change to protect our children. But I will get around to it. I don't want to circumvent my other board members, but I do want to say this, we are working to try to have a forum in town. Michael Gobert and I have met with the superintendent, and we believe there needs, there is a need now to have a parent forum, to make sure we inform the people in our town that we have a lot of good things in place. We've done a lot of good things, and we can make improvements, because we don't want people to have fears. We want them to be able to send their children off to our schools and feel comfortable. And I think it's time now, we get everyone in a room and explain that to them. But we're not going to explain everything, okay? Because there's certain things, again, I've been trained in the military, worked in the industry for many years, it's okay where you don't have to know everything. There's a reason for it. And our schools are set up with certain protocols and structures that we don't need to tell the public about, because we don't need to create more vulnerability than we already have in some cases. So, but we're working, I'm not guarantee we're going to be able to do it, but we're working. We have our town councils working together to try to find out what we can say, when we can do this. So I know if we can do this, I would really, because I would request that the board members all try to participate in it. Mr. Messeri.
It was a very, very sad event. And I'm in agreement with Mr. O'Leary's comments about something has to be done, that something is broader than just taking all the guns away. I mean, if we look at this particular incident, there were communication breakdowns, there were a lot of things that could have prevented it even before it happened. And, you know, I think we have to look at the entire picture and come up with a solution, and perhaps what the kids of that school have started may lead to that. Maybe, maybe they'll get to the legislature and get them to think about a whole bunch of things. But there's a lot more than just the individual that did the shooting at fault here, because there was a clear breakdown in communications that might have prevented the issue. We could talk about this all night, and I don't really want to. Close on this and say, it was a sad event, we all should be concerned and hope that we come up with solutions that will prevent this kind of thing happen in the future. Michael and I, and I'll leave the real content to you, Michael, I went to the DEP with the town administrator, Mark Clark, and our consultants associated with SUE, we talked about both paths that we're on, in fact, that we have to make a decision soon. I didn't, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't hear anything from the DEP regarding any issues that we might have going in either direction.
That's correct. They're very supportive of what we want to do, and they, they understand it's important to us and the future of the town, and they want to work with us. This is the DEP of old, this is a DEP, a lot of reasonable people working in there. They understand how important infrastructure is to the lifelines of all these communities. So we're very fortunate to have representatives that are very, right down the street, that are willing to work with us. And it was a good meeting, and it was a quick meeting, because we, you know, right now, the most important thing is, they've told us, is come back and see us after you figure out what you're doing with your water. So we got to just keep on grinding away on that and get that decision in place, and then kind of everything else will fall in place. Whether we separate this and pull out the wastewater at some point, we'll have to address that in a few weeks, but, Michael, if you wanted to add anything else?
No, I think that that's a, you both have succinctly described the meeting. You know, they seem to really feel that there were alternatives available to us with regard to wastewater. I mean, that was the focus of our discussion, both to our north and to our south. And then from a permitting standpoint, it didn't seem that there was more or less restriction in terms of the permitting, one way or the other, based on their feedback. So, you know, they were great to set up the meeting on fairly short order. I think we were with, we were in another meeting 10 days ago, 10 days, 10 days prior. So they, they set up the meeting and met with us pretty quickly. They gave us, you know, the, the attention of two staff persons in the Wilmington office. So, you know, we certainly appreciate that.
Anything else, Mr. Messeri?
Last thing is, just to let the public know that we are meeting at the end of our board of selectmen here on Wednesday night. Meeting is at 7:30, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Will it be televised?
It will be.
Good question, because I was going to ask whether we, we'll come on board closer, whatever.
And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that meeting when it comes. Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I try to keep things local and nonpartisan up here the best I can, but there are, sometimes you have actions that you have to kind of speak out on, and what happened in Florida, obviously, is just horrendous, to say the least. While you cannot rationalize the actions of a crazy person, you know, I think most people want reasonable gun control. I just wish our folks, our representatives, you know, from our congressman to our president to our senators, would get together in a bipartisan manner and get something done. I think putting stuff on Twitter, whether it be our president or whether it be our congressman, is just inappropriate, it's not going to get something done. They need to work together. I think reasonable people want this. To the, and to the parents, the number of parents, vast number of parents that have reached out to me over safety issues in our schools, that have called me personally over the last two weeks, you're, you know, what you've said to me is very heartfelt. I have nothing but the utmost confidence, and I think our whole board does here, of our public safety officials in this town, that are going to do the right thing, they're going to make sure everything is safe. And I just want everyone to be reassured that our town is doing everything we can within our realm to make sure our kids are safe. And I just wish people in DC could stop the crap and get something done. I think everybody wants a reasonable gun control measure, and I just find, I've never seen it so divided in Washington right now. I just wish people would come to the middle and kind of reach some common ground, because there is common ground out there to be had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Menipelli.
And I would, I would just echo the similar comments, and I agree wholeheartedly with Selectman O'Leary here, and I, I just want to add just a few more things. It's to be a little bit cautious about stigmatizing mental illness, because there are thousands of people with mental illness, diagnosed mental illness, that go get the help that they need, that aren't, you know, interested in committing these sort of heinous acts. So to just be cautious about stigmatizing, there's no one answer here, except as Selectman O'Leary points out, people that are intent on committing these evil acts aren't doing it with a gunpowder musket, they are getting an assault rifle, very easily, and more than one, they're getting arsenals of weapons. So one thing is a fact here that's undoubtedly clear, and that is what's being used to commit these, these types of completely insidious acts. And I think what our schools are doing right, and I think what our kids are doing right, which we saw today with the Northeast Vocational School, and which we saw with the high school recently, is they are stepping up, they are reporting things, they are seeing things on the social media, they are saying, they're reporting things. If you see something, say something. So somehow, and unfortunately, in the time that we live in, that message is getting across, and, and these kids are speaking up, which I, for one, am very grateful for, and I'm grateful to the school administrators for what they are trying to do to tackle this, and to suggest that, you know, we, number one, arm our teachers who are already serving in multiple capacities for our kids. And, and to have them be burdened with having to stop a scenario, they were already armed resource officers at these facilities, and we have, we have our own resource officer there. So if this could have been stopped or should have or would have, arming the teachers when they already, it's a, it's a lack of, it's a total lack of understanding. Probably, have you ever set foot in, in a public school? Probably not. Have you ever sat down and talked with one of, one of our public school teachers to understand the multiple roles that they play? And then to add on that they're going to be armed and get a bonus from what source of funds are we going to give bonuses from? It's, now, I'm sorry for my diatribe, but let's get real with some real solutions here. And it's not just one answer, check for mental illness, or, you know, ban this, it's multiple, multiple solutions here. If you, I also think, and again, this is a personal opinion, I also think people my age are out of touch with what this generation of kids are, are going through, good and bad. And I agree with Selectman O'Leary, these, these students, student leaders that we're seeing come out of this tremendous tragedy, traumatized by what's happened, they are the change, and, and I applaud them, and I welcome this. And I also welcome that from our own kids. We have great leaders in our own student body here. So I just think that we're also out of touch, so as a parent and to other parents, we might sit back and say, we know our kid, we know what our kids would and wouldn't do. But some parents are in a haze, and I think you should get out of the haze and talk to your kid. Some kids fall through the cracks, and there are multiple flags that go off, that there are multiple reasons why we all need to stop and pay attention to the flags, and that scenario and what scenarios are happening in our own communities are the, are the reason why. Stop, get out of the haze, pay attention to your kids, talk to your kids. I think there's a, there's a great divide right now that, that we need to bridge to in terms of our younger, our younger kids. And I'm not an old person, but if I sit and try to get into the minds, mindset of what's going on, there are some, there are some kids there that feel like there's nothing else beyond this. Once I'm out of high school, that's it. It's not something that I can relate to. I don't know if my colleagues can relate to that. I, we always felt like the world was our oyster, and there was so much we could do when we, when we got out of school, and anything that we set our mind to do, we could do. I don't know that a lot of people of that generation feel that way, so I don't know, again, where the answer is, but I do think a lot of it has to do with communicating. The flags get raised, pay attention to the flags, get out of the haze and pay attention to your kids. And that's some of the steps that we can, we can do. But I, I agree wholeheartedly that, you know, these are the kids that they say out of the mouths of babes, they're, listen, listen to them. They have solutions that they know can be effective. Why we're not stopping and making that happen is baffling. So we need to be a part of ushering that change into, I agree. Thank you for listening.
So you heard me mention earlier about this parent forum, and I still believe it's important, and I think now is the time for us as leaders to get together with our parents, because times have changed, we're living in a different world than we were two weeks ago. We knew we were, but I don't think it was as real as we have seen it now. And I think it's important, because we've done a lot of good things. And I think it's important, because we've done a lot of good things, and I think that's where you start as leaders. We get people in a room, and we express and make sure they have the comfort of going home to their kids and explaining that we have done a lot of good things in this town. We've invested a lot of money in safety, and we'll start there. Are we perfect? No. But on Friday, on Saturday, we're having a budget hearing, and I think if when you go and read these budgets that have been put forward to us by all our public safety leaders, there's investments that we need to continue to make, and I think we should be willing to share that with the public as we go through this process and to get their feedback. Because, you know, sometimes just listening to is a good answer. And it's sort of what you say, not only listen to the kids, but we need to listen to our parents. We need to give them a forum to talk to us, because as you can see, they don't come here because we have a lot of things on our agenda. But in this one, we need to have one agenda item, and we need to talk about safety in our... Not only in our schools, but in all our municipal buildings, and we've got to start there. So I'm hoping we can still pull this off, and I'm working pretty hard, and Michael and I have been continuing to work with the superintendent to make this happen. So we do have changes in our budgets that reflect to this. I want to go back to this. Again, you stop listening to what's going on around the country. People are using Massachusetts gun laws, because we have some of the most strict in the country, as the baseline where they want to get people, and I think that's great. And I feel good about saying that, and I know we have more work we can do. In regards to the hearing about the water meeting we're having on Wednesday evening, in our past few meetings, I think you've heard us talk about Andover Town Meeting. They had a special town meeting where they made a modification to the Warren article that somewhat changed the agreement that we had in principle with Andover, and we're just trying to figure out a way forward, and Andover's supposed to be coming here on Wednesday evening to explain to us what they can do to sort of... If there is a way to rectify the modification that was made to their Warren article at their special town meeting, and that's what we're supposed to be doing, is listening on Wednesday evening. Public is welcome to come, and then we're going to be making the decision at our meeting on Monday, March 5th, depending on what we learn on Wednesday. So if anybody has any questions or need more information prior to that, you can always reach out to me. On March 14th, everyone has their schedule for Secretary Ash's visit, and that'll be here in this room. And Michael and I have worked on an agenda, and I will get that out once we finalize. We built a little script on how things will go. We'll share that with the board members so everyone can prepare. Let me just see if there's anything else I had on my list. National Night Off, March 13th. National Night Off, we've been doing now for about three years, I believe. Did you arrive?
Fourth year, yeah.
Fourth year? And I think it's a great evening for folks to... No meetings. To take an opportunity to go out to dinner with your family and just spend time as a family and take a night off. I love that we're participating in it again. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Schultz had brought up earlier. I've had a lot of people in the community reach out to me in regards to Ipsa River Park. Ipsa River Park is a jewel. It's a jewel of our town. It's a centerpiece of our town. I couldn't be more proud of it, because that's where I started my political careers, working in the park and rec group. We have six acres of land there. We put a lot of money into it and allow people to go down. People go down there and take advantage of it. We, as a community, need to stand up together and stop it and ask people to please leash the dogs, clean up the feces that their dogs are leaving behind, because it ruins the park, and we don't want to have to turn around and have our police officers spending time where you've heard about this, you know, just the drug issues that are going on in town, the security issues that people have. To have people turn away and go down there and cite... Give citations out with leashes is ridiculous. So I hope it's going to get in the paper. I hope people are listening. Come on, community. We're better than this. We don't need to be spending our time on this. It's common sense. Respect the laws. Their bylaws are there for all of us, and if we could just all work together, we could spend our time, our valuable time, on things that really help move this town forward. And that's all I have. Mr. Misery.
Just a question. We're meeting Saturday for the budget.
Yes, sir.
On Monday, we have a board meeting scheduled, correct?
That's correct.
Are we going to continue with the budgets? I want to know if I need to go through those and...
Yes, there are budget hearings scheduled.
Three or four on Monday, the 5th. There's four that we have. I don't know the top of them off the top of my head.
Yeah, we'll get the schedule out to the board members.
It's actually in Dropbox.
If you want to have a chance, go through them and be full of them.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem. So I will see everyone in a couple nights from now. Would you like to make a motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn, or a second?
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.